Welcome, everybody, to the January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five Select Board Meeting. First off, a roll call for attendance.
And track.
Article.
Capello here.
Gibson here.
Secoshai here. I entertain a motion to enter non-public.
Oh, make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
For the purpose of?
For the purpose of reputation, please.
Second the motion.
Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Capello, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Secoshai. Welcome, everybody, back to the January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five Select Board Meeting. Um, I'd like to entertain a motion to, uh, exit non-public and seal the minutes for up to one month for reputation.
What he said.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Roll call.
And track, aye.
Article five.
Capello, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Secoshai. Let's all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, crisp on that. Okay, uh, we got the agenda review and approval. Um, any discussion from the board? Any discussion on the agenda? Review and approval?
Approved the agenda is written.
And I would second that.
Roll call.
And track.
Article five.
Capello, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Secoshai. Onto public comment. So this is the first of two public comment sessions in the meeting. I ask everybody be nice and polite. If you're not nice and polite, you'll be asked to leave. So if there's anybody in studio or online, please make your way up or raise your hand online. Not seeing anything online? We're gonna go to public hearings and invited guests. May we have a school board liaison in here that would like to come up and chat?
Thank you. So, um, I don't have a whole lot to talk about for the school board because, uh, our meeting got canceled last week because there really wasn't a lot of pressing business for us. But on Wednesday, the, uh, twenty second, um, we had our annual meeting with the Oyster River School Board. Uh, it lasted about an hour. We went to Oyster River, uh, Middle School. Uh, apparently they alternate years, so next year they'll come to Barrington. Um, they handed out a pretty interesting, I'm, I'm not gonna read all of it, but I will leave it. If anybody wants to look at it, but, um, our enrollment in, at Oyster River in, uh, ninth grade, we have, uh, thirty-nine students. Tenth grade, we got forty-seven, eleven, we got forty-four, and twelfth grade, we have forty-one for a total of, uh, hundred and seventy-one students right now. And what was the other? It, they talked a little bit about the different programs that they run over there. The... They, they gave the SAT scores. Um, uh, interestingly, uh, right now, eighty-two percent of our students in ninth grade are on the honor roll. Seventy-six percent of tenth graders, sixty-six percent of eleventh graders, and seventy-three percent of twelfth graders are on the honor roll, so that's, uh...
Excellent.
I thought that was pretty interesting.
Yes.
And I guess that pretty much sums up. That, that, they had the SAT scores and stuff, but I'll leave this for a few folks that, uh, might be interested to take a peek at it.
Appreciate that.
Could I ask you one question? Um, you said two hundred and seventy-one students at Oyster River?
One seventy-one.
And what's our total enrollment of high school students?
I, in high school?
Yeah.
I don't have that.
Okay, it's just over four-hundred.
Yeah.
Four-hundred, if I recall.
When are those enrollment numbers as of, do you know?
Um, it, it doesn't list them here.
This, the school budget shows enrollment for Oyster River at one seventy-nine right now, and it looks like there's a built-in buffer for three additional students? So is that, is the school budgeting for eleven additional Oyster River students?
Um, you know, that one seventy-nine, it looks like the enrollment changes by class. Um, yeah, October enrollment was one seventy-nine.
October enrollment was one seventy-nine.
October is the reporting date for the state.
Yep.
So that was probably, that was really...
Last October. So enrollment's gone down in Oyster River by eight students.
Yes. That's all I have.
Five, excellent.
Thank you, chief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Department head annual reports, all of, uh, well, last year, uh, while making the twenty-five budget, we also developed a new process, which we said for department heads to, um, make presentations to the, to the ABC instead of the Select Board. So they're here today to give us a quick, brief update and rundown on their budgets.
Or, or their departments. So, so the work of the last year and looking ahead to the, uh, challenges and success opportunities in the upcoming year. Yep, so they'll be presented to you in alphabetical order of first name.
Okay, first...
Luck of the draw.
Amy Dougherty, Finance Administration.
So Amy had the benefit of sitting with the Advisory Budget Committee through the entire process and helping lead the charge.
But I'm not gonna talk about that.
No.
Um, so in two thousand and twenty-four, there was a lot of transitions, but all in a good way. Usually you hear about transitions, you kind of have like a negative connotation to that, and so ours are all good. So, um, we got back with our old auditing firm, Bashan and Clouquet, this year, and things went really well. Um, usually when you start back up with a new auditing firm, you have to talk about what happened while they were gone. You know, they worked with us before, but we had to fill them in and what happened in the past, you know, three years that we weren't working with them, so, um, things went really well. It took a little extra time, um, just because of that reason. Um, but there was only one audit finding, and that was for the trustees, so, um, that was our most successful audit And we also just have a really great working relationship with Cory, who is the author. We also took on Becky Nelson in the Tax Department, and she does accounts payable and accounts receivable. The transition's been so easy. She was backup support when we've had vacancies in that department before. So getting her up and running was super easy. And Crystal Murky as the Tax Collector and Finance Officer, also, she's been doing that job for a while and just kind of got into that title. So that transition was also very easy. And I think, you know, working towards what we knew she was going to be going into and training her all the way up until the actual transition was really, really helpful. We have worked on streamlining and efficiency in job roles. And so with this transition, we've taken everybody's, the three job roles, and sort of figured out what works best for everyone to either keep what they have, take on different tasks, and move things around between the three of us. And, you know, we all work very well together to get the job done. And getting backups for vacations and things like that has been really easy. We've struggled with that in the past. There's only been a couple people who do be backups. And so having everybody know everybody's job role has been really helpful. Also, we had our annual apple picking event this year at Butternut Farm, which was a big success. People really liked the location change. So we'll see if we do that next year at Butternut or go back there. We don't know yet. You'll have to wait until 2025. And so 2025, we're getting credit cards for the Building Department first. That has been in the works for a couple months now. It's a bit of a slower transition, I'd say, to get that up and going. So you're welcome, Jim. And we're going to Invoice Cloud, which we use in other departments. So we use it in Town Clerk and Tax. So I do think that we've already streamlined a lot of that, like worked out all the kinks of credit cards. And so it's a little different because the Building Department's just a different department. So we'll have to, you know, figure out what works for that. But I think we're gonna look into credit cards for Transfer Station. Invoice Cloud isn't an option for that because they don't have a software system. You know, they have an old-school computer, and we just need a standalone machine that we can put the fees out to residents and not take that on ourselves. And you'd think it's a simple process, but when you go and talk to all these companies, they don't want you to do that. And it's really complicated. And so anyways, we're still looking into other options for the Transfer Station. But for now, we'll get Building Department up and running. And then we'll just continue to work on looking for efficiencies. I feel like we're in a world where we're just keeping, like adding to our job roles and not bringing on people to fill those job roles. So looking at, you know, I think we've done a really good job in this year, looking at those efficiencies. But as you take on new tasks, there's more opportunities there. And that's what I can think of.
We appreciate all your hard work.
Absolutely. I'll only add two things. One, when we talk about the workload and efficiencies, that becomes really important as we become more complex as an organization. Three years in a row, we've brought in over $2 million in grants. And that comes at a tremendous cost in the Finance Office for tracking all of those dollars, being responsive to all the reporting. And so it's really important that we have somebody like Amy in a leadership role that's constantly optimizing. Second thing I'll mention, I talk to colleagues across the state and brag to them about our audits, right? It is, it is an exception, not a rule, that a municipal audit is as clean as ours. And that also isn't an accident, right? That happens because Amy and her team's committed to doing it right and not cutting corners. That comes at a cost of time and effort. And so that, those efficiencies and the optimization is really important to make sure that we have the capacity to keep up with the complexities as we grow. So a lot happens behind the scenes in that office.
Any other comments from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Crystal Murky, Tax Collector.
Amy gave you a nice introduction.
She really did.
Yeah, it was fantastic.
She really did. It's a good team to be on, that Finance Team. But as far as tax goes, you all remember that Ms. Linda Markowitz retired. So we miss her, and we stole Becky from Kim, which has worked out really awesome. All the residents like seeing her in there. It's really fun. They all, "Oh, and you're over here now." So it's kind of been a good icebreaker for us in the Tax Office with the residents. I completed my certification with the New Hampshire Tax Collectors Association this summer, the third year, third and final year. As far as the actual taxes go, in comparison to what we committed and what we collected at the end of the year, we were within about a percent of property tax, about 3% overall for all the different types of taxes. And we processed just over 1,000 online payments, which has been steadily increasing. Not as many folks coming through the doors. It's mostly mail-in and online stuff happening. As far as next year, we're really focusing on record retention, organizing. We've got our great storage room now, but we are gonna focus on keeping that organized. We've started to set up some meetings. We're gonna be getting a disposition log in place and just kind of helping all the departments keep tabs on their stuff. We've also been talking about secure shredding. That's about it.
Excellent. Any other comments from the board?
The only thing I'll add, as far as a succession management success, I can't speak volumes enough about how successful the transition of Tax Collector has been, right? There's a really critical role, and somebody who develops really strong relationships with a position that develops strong relationships with residents. So to be able to bring Crystal on as the deputy and see that transition through, working with Linda. Now, we don't always have the opportunity to do that. But being able to have support from the Select Board and the community when it's possible to do that, find somebody that is great for the role, train them, get them through the certification process, and keep them and bring them up has been, has been very helpful. It has felt like nothing changed, right? It's definitely a huge loss seeing Linda around the town hall. But as far as the operations of the Tax Office, we haven't skipped a beat. And if anything, we have expanded the work product of that office with Crystal taking the finance duties with her to the Tax Collector role and creating an opportunity for Becky Nelson, the Deputy Tax Collector, to take on some of those accounts payable functions and Revenue Clerk, like Amy mentioned. So a great success story.
Yeah, like she said, it got a lot easier, segregation of duties, and it's just been a lot easier, access to things, coverage.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you for your hard work. Next up, Deborah Wood, Human Resources.
Hi. Human resource and welfare. So the human resources is the easiest one. We have lost 10 employees this year. We rehired eight. Two of those losses were retirees. Also, the losses were not, the other losses were not people who'd been here very long. So it may very well have just been not a good fit or something like that. I do do exit interviews. I have not seen anything or heard anything in an exit interview that raises any flags, which is good, because sometimes you do hear things. I'm always looking for things to make Barrington an employer of choice, you know, what benefits we can bring in. Also, there's a lot of things no cost, like sometimes flexible schedules, things like that. So I talk to employees about those kind of things. That's the easy one. Welfare, 2023, we spent a budget of roughly $8,700. And the majority of that was on electrical assistance. But that is also when CAPS was giving out money and putting people in hotels and paying 18 months of rent without any questions or any, anything, basically. When that ended, we had a lot of electric bills. One that comes to mind was over $16,000 because they weren't allowed to shut them off at that time. And unfortunately, when it started, it was only make a payment plan. Well, some of those payment plans were $800 a month. I can't let our clients commit to that, knowing they can't do that. But Eversource did get a new program called Fresh Start, which almost everybody who comes into our office does qualify for. And the Fresh Start is, they take their average monthly bill, and if they pay that bill in full for 12 months, every time they make a payment, they forgive a payment, which is a great program.
Yeah.
So if you see anything on that or, you know, ways to support, that is a wonderful program, especially for somebody who owes $16,000, and maybe their normal bill is $180. So every time they make that $180 payment on time, they're forgiven, one twelfth of their bill. So we put as many people on that who qualified with the caveat, you know, if there's any reason you're not gonna make that payment, come see me. Because we're gonna make it. We're not gonna let anybody fall off that. So that was 2023. We had 58 contact cases. It's not necessarily new people. It's just 58 meetings. 2024, we had 48 contact cases, but we spent over $22,000. And the difference is the rent. That's the big one. CAPS is not paying rent. CAPS is not paying, first, helping move in anymore either. And most of the towns in the area are also not taking anybody for their waitlist. There is no waitlist. So that's what's going on there, and the rate, the rents have gone up. So I expect that's gonna go up more. There's not a lot we can do that. But I have seen a huge change in our clients. Tracy was kind enough to talk to me last week about it. We were having people, couples, whether or without families, who, for whatever reason, when CAPS was paying their rent, they quit working or whatever. I am having a lot more people over 65 and on Social Security where their rent has gone up or one of them has died. I've had two clients over 65, and one is 80, that something happened, so they lost their job. I mean, when you have an 80-year-old who's going, "I'm gonna find another job, but my engine blew. Can I get a car?" I mean, that's, that's a sad case. And there is no place that most of them can live with one income in an apartment. If they're in an apartment, I have no place to send them, other than trying to find a shelter. Yeah, the clients I have right now are, it's either a spouse has passed away, somebody's injured, or it's a medical issue.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay.
Is that all?
That's all I have, unless somebody's got questions.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Next up, Elizabeth Bolton, Library Director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me know if I don't speak loud enough. I'm a librarian, so I always kind of keep it low. And I apologize. I don't know. We had a very busy year at the library in 2024, and I anticipate that 2025 is gonna be even busier. But for 2024, through a combination of factors, most importantly, the voters voting yes for a purchase and renovation of the former Frisbee Medical Urgent Care, we've seen an interest and excitement about the library that's translated into added visits. We've had, we had 33,000 people through the door this past year versus 29,000 the year before. That's 11% increase. We also saw a 5% increase in circulation of our physical materials, books, DVDs, movies, as well as a big increase of our digital items. We also increased our total number of cardholders to 4,175, which is about a 7% increase overall. And that boosts the number of library users in the, in the town. Up to about 43% of the town has a library card. We're still pushing to get everybody up there. Our biggest increase in use has come through program attendance. In 2023, we had 423 pro-ages and 6,700 attendees. But in 2024, we offered 516, and we were at 7,800 people. That's a 21% increase of people just coming. We hope that means that we've hit the sweet spot and we're offering the sort of programming that's matching people's needs and interests in the town. We have a very generous Friends Group, who, I'm happy to report, have given us extra money so that there's now a lot of cultural additions. We offer museum passes to the Dover Children's Museum, Bedrock Gardens, Seacoast Science Center, the Courier Museum, a New Hampshire Parks Pass, and they just generously gave us money for a flex pass to the Museum of Fine Arts in Boston. Gives everybody a little bit of choice, plus for cardholders, if you want to go to any local museum and you can bring in your tickets, your receipt, and the Friends will reimburse you for that. So we like to get everybody moving culturally. I will say, the new library building is moving along well. We anticipate opening sometime in June, all things being equal. Right now, I'd say we're on time and on budget, keeping our fingers crossed. Our biggest issue is trying to pull together all the various pieces that need to be done prior to moving, that including figuring out where our shelving's going, if we're gonna be able to fit all our shelving in, our packing up our books, our programming supplies. It's just like moving into a new house, just with a lot of extra stuff. You're also having to find and order materials for areas we don't currently have, like a dedicated teen area and a dedicated children's room. We don't have any furnishings for those because we don't really have them. So we're pulling it all together fairly quickly. Time is starting to run out. It's only a few months until June. Our greatest challenge, as perhaps for some other departments, has been staffing due to a combination of illness, staff leaving for jobs closer to home, people seeking a greater challenge somewhere along the way. We haven't really been fully staffed for more than a few weeks at a time during my entire tenure, which started in April 2023. I think, yeah, it really hasn't, it really has not smoothed out. Luckily, I do have a very dedicated staff, and we've been able to adjust our schedules to sort of mitigate. We don't want to close if we don't have to. There have been a couple times when we've had absolutely, I don't know if anybody else has had a lot of COVID and flu this winter. It's been a problem. But we are most thankful for the supportive community that we have, including the Select Board and our Board of Trustees. And we are grateful for the opportunity to keep serving the residents of the town. And we look forward to doing so in our new digs many years to come. And thank you for all your help. You've been... Elizabeth, I'm sorry to see you leave and move on. I hate to bring that up.
And if you want Liz's job...
Like, all right, she doesn't want to talk about it.
No.
Doesn't excuse you at all.
I just feel like I haven't been here long. I'm just getting up to speed. But it's an opportunity for my husband, so I, but I think you're gonna do great. And I hope to come up and be able to see the new library at some point in time.
Be excited. Safe travels and enjoy your new environment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Right from Boston Pops to Grand Ole Operates, good news.
It's not great.
Next up, Erin Paradise, Transfer Station Administrator.
Hello. All right. Okay, so the brief rundown for the Transfer Station for 2024 is that the Transfer Station Recycling Center finished within budget. It generated $322,932. So $225,000 of that went to the general fund, and $97,931 went into the Transfer Station Revolving Fund. So with the revenue that we generate, it offsets the cost of our waste disposal. So I have some fun facts for everybody. In 2024, the Transfer Station and Recycling Center brought in 1,094 tons of MSW. Nothing to be proud of, but it just gives you guys an idea of the quantity that is coming into our facility.
Sounds like tons.
455 tons of demo, which is kind of like the furniture, wood scraps. which is kind of like the furniture, wood scraps, construction debris, 99 tons of glass, 316 tons of single-stream recycling, and 121 tons of metal. And just to give you an idea, a blue whale weighs 100 tons. So for MSW, we were 1,094. So we're still keeping track of traffic entering the facility. We're averaging 690 vehicles on Tuesdays, 280 on Thursdays, and about 1,800 on Saturdays.
1,800. Huge number.
So, and that's for some of those who, you know, we don't capture the ones that go through the exit gate or the highway gate. Yes, that still happens. One of our ongoing goals is waste diversion and reduction. The waste diversion is important because it helps conserve natural resources, reduce the amount of waste going into landfills, minimize environmental pollution, and increase the need for new raw materials by reusing and recycling, ultimately contributing to more sustainable lifestyle and protecting the planet. So a few examples, if you guys don't know, of the waste diversion programs that we have at the transfer station, obviously with the metal, but book recycling. So we have, we currently have two book bins there, which last year we brought in one point, about one and a half tons of books alone. Textile recycling, which came in at 33.7 tons. And then our plastic film recycling, which came in at two tons, which two tons of plastic is pretty significant. And all of that is being diverted from landfills if it going into, you know, the open top or going into our household trash. More recently, the big news is we've added composting. So we've teamed up with Mr. Fox via drop-off location for food waste for residents. Since January 2nd, we've had two pickups. And as of tomorrow, we are adding a second 64-gallon toter. We, so just to give you an idea, last week, we didn't quite fill the bin, but it got pushed to be picked up on Friday. And then by Saturday, it's almost completely full. So by Tuesday, it'll be full, but we'll have another one. And then we, we get picked up Wednesdays, so we get picked up weekly. And it, they've been great to communicate with. We've been, I can literally go online and I can skip a pickup or if there's any problems, the communication is great. So things are going well and it's catching on. One of the important notes that I'd like to tell you guys is that the plastic film recycling is run by volunteers. We are just a collection point. And we are getting inundated with plastic. While we are proud that we have offset 2.1 tons from the landfill, we also don't want to encourage residents to buy more plastic film. You know, everyone thinks because we are, you know, capturing this stuff that it's a, it is a good thing, but it's not a good thing. Like, we're trying to get residents to look at what they're purchasing. Reduce plastic film can be done by reusing, recycling, and buying products with less packaging. So I encourage everybody to take a look at what they're buying at the store to reduce that. Stop using plastic bags. I mean, you know, that, there's a good gem, you know, Sikoshia tote bags. There you go.
Yeah.
Just reusable bags. I can't stress that enough. A lot of it is because, you know, a lot of this comes down to our volunteers to filter through some of this stuff. And if you've ever gone there at the end of a Saturday, I have pictures that we, I can share later. But, you know, all four of those bins are chock full with stuff spilling out. And that's not what we want to see. So, and also, we're always looking for volunteers. So if you know anybody who is interested to pick up a shift, it's picking up and bagging, weighing plastic film and bringing it down to either Hannaford's or Market Basket. I know I'm dragging on. So we batted some new signage to help with tire sizes and pricing appropriately. We made a huge lime green tire disposal fee sign that's next to the tire container. And we've added signs for composting and glass. With the help of the Highway Department, we removed unsightly, overgrown, broken-down fence and replaced a new, with it with a new six-foot chain-link perimeter fence at the Brewster end of the facility. Also, with the help of the Highway Department, we installed platforms with handrails in front of the front windows of the MSW building, or commonly the Green Bag Building is what a lot of the residents call. We're hoping that more residents utilize the front windows. You know, they were set up a little bit higher than the ones on the side. But to, you know, really maximize, we're encouraging residents to pull forward, use the front windows, which now have great steps and handrails. We held our annual roadside cleanup event in April. And while the weather didn't start out great, ended up being a beautiful day. Just about 100 volunteers picked up 1,360 pounds of trash from the sides of the road. Save the date, April 19th, 2025, is this year's townwide cleanup event. For those of you looking to do more cleanups throughout the year, Don't Trash Barrington does monthly cleanups, and you can find their information on the town website. Looking ahead, we need to do more resident education. It's really important that the stuff that's coming into the facility is maintained and handled correctly. You know, it's good for everybody. We're trying to get more social media presence with things and trying to alert, you know, of what's going on. One of the big things is in July, there's a new rechargeable battery disposal ban that will take effect. So we really need to, we haven't run into it, but I know Lee has with lithium-ion batteries and causing fires. So this is a huge issue for transfer stations all over. So, you know, we're going to try to push all of that information and share what we can with that. We need to start looking at our contract with waste management. Our contract of 10 years is up in 2027. We'll need to look how we handle some of the material, specifically single stream. We're not maximizing our tonnage at all. And with the potential of hauling rates, we just, you know, it may be like, I don't know if you noticed, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we use one MSW compactor so we can maximize one and have that pulled on Friday. We may have to go down to one single-stream compactor for Tuesdays and Thursdays, kind of finish that off and then open up the second one. But it's going to be a trial and error period. But we got to try to do the best we can if these rates are going to double. Another thing we got to look at is employees. We're very fortunate to have the crew that we have, but not everybody stays forever. So we need to look to see how we can get more applicants when positions open. And then some facility upgrades, paving the transfer station yard, extending some concrete pads, and possibly adding some more when the cans are pulled with the demo and especially MSW, they're heavy, and we need to get them off the pavement and more on concrete. And then we just do some cosmetic stuff, painting the MSW building and replacing some sliding, the sliding windows. And we need to replace the landfill cat fencing, which uses a field fencing, and like to do some landscaping. So I know I went on. Sorry.
Excellent. Thank you for all your hard work. Any other comments from the board?
The only thing I'll add is the Transfer Station Recycling Center Review Committee at Erin's direction. You know, the feasibility study was just completed. Some of those projects Erin mentioned was advised by that. But that's really going to lay the groundwork for how that facility evolves over the coming years to meet the needs, the changing needs of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, George Joy, Police Chief.
And should we sing "Happy Birthday" to you now or later?
No. You definitely should not.
Ruins the surprise.
So it's interesting that the TA started off with secession because that's the first thing I have too. Deputy Chief was hired in June. Obviously, that's huge in our succession plan. Beyond that, training and succession goes a long way. So Rick has completed two of the, Deputy Chief has completed two of the FBI LEADER courses. I'm a strong supporter of the FBI LEADER courses. There's three in total. I took them over the course of my career. Got Deputy Chief through two. He'll get his third in this year. Detective Sergeant Barber, at this point, has completed two. She'll be completing the third one, I believe, at the same time as you, Deputy Chief. The other two patrol sergeants, Sergeants Libby and Baker, have both completed supervisory. They'll be completing executive next. I'd like to keep them a year, a class ahead of where they are. And once I get them through, I'm going to start looking at getting the senior patrolmen into supervisory and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the succession plan is moving along perfectly. Retention has been as good as I can hope. Obviously, we lost Officer Morse, which leads me into statistics. I'm not going to bore you with the statistics. They're in the town reports. You can see this year, you can see last year. Anybody that's following along, you can see that our numbers fell this year. I'm not going to concern myself with half a dozen accidents. Honestly, there's a change in the way we've been documenting accidents anyway because our system is horrible and completing accidents is very unwieldy in the new system. So the older accidents, which we might have documented prior, vehicle off the road, needs to pull out by a tow truck, we've scrapped that and we're doing offense reports now. Doesn't change anything for the folks in Barrington. It changes the fact that my people are not wasting 45 minutes doing an accident report for a vehicle off the road that needs to pull out instead of a true accident. Our traffic stops are down, just shy of 500 short. Donnie Morse. I'm down one patrolman who was very active on his own. I can write that off pretty easily. Our arrests are down slightly, same write-off as far as I'm concerned. So I'm not concerned about the drop. I would love for arrests to fall dramatically, but they're not going to. That's just going to be status quo across the board. Same with our total calls for service. What I look at as far as activity, making sure the folks are doing what they're supposed to on the road, is reflected in the building checks. And again, we're fairly consistent minus Donnie. Community outreach is up, which I like. It means that my folks are getting out. They're logging what they're doing with the community, Cub Scouts, et cetera, et cetera, library. So I'm not concerned about the stats. There are some falls. I'm certain that as soon as we hire somebody, they're up to stuff, they're working on their own, that we're going to see those increase again. The motor vehicle is always an issue. Keep hearing it. It's out there. There are speeders in this town. Shocking. They're on Malago Road, they're on Province Road, they're on Beauty Hill Road, they're on Green Hill Road, they're on Toll End Road, they're on the Main thoroughfares, and we can't chase them down enough. Hopefully, with the budget passing, the addition of another unit, that's going to put a dent in it. Calls for service rolls into the school. I had Detective Sergeant Barber pull the statistics for the school, what we can track down. We're looking at about 125 calls, and that's a very low-ball estimate. That is what was pulled for calls with the address of the middle school. That doesn't reflect what Detective Sergeant Barber's picking up while she's at a meeting and has a walk-in. She meets with staff about once a week, given timeframes. So we're not collecting all that data. We're working on getting better about that. I can tell you in the last week that we've covered calls from criminal threats, like legitimate criminal threats between students, up to a student threatening to shoot the school up. Parents in the room would have gotten that notification. That was handled. There was no actual threat, but we had to deal with it. That dumped three of us, the Deputy Chief, myself, and Detective Sergeant Barber, into the school for the better part of an hour and 45 minutes-ish, give or take. Detective Sergeant Barber's really good about getting in the schools, meeting with staff, picking up on that. She does that because she has the time right now. As her workload increases, if she picks up three or four major index crimes, she's not going to have that availability. The school has lodged some complaints as far as us not being there for traffic, us not being there for this. And it's not just the school, it's the parents. It's time to revisit the school resource officer so that we can have somebody to address these without taking away from patrol. We had some good cases, even though our statistics are down. We're getting quality over quantity. Getting some great drug arrests off the street. Officer Saroski has been hammering drug interdiction. There is a residence in town, and I will leave addresses out of it, that between patrol, we racked up a number of arrests surrounding that house. The information from those arrests led us to a search warrant, which led us into the house, which led to four arrests amongst 11 people. That was a joint operation between the Barrington Police Department and a couple of different task forces in the area. We collected half a dozen, eight, nine phones out of that, which led to more information, which led to more drug arrests. That also led to a current investigation that's open with the Attorney General's Office for Elderly Amuse, given a resident of that house. So even though we're showing some decline in motor vehicle and whatnot, those are the cases that are coming out of it. And if you ask me if I'm willing to give up three or 400 taillight stops to gain that kind of, yes, I absolutely am. It means that everybody's doing what they're supposed to on the street. And then the obvious one for the police department is we did a lot of infrastructure work at the PD this year. Big wiring project, hardware for the computer systems, security, the doors. With the fire chief, we've got the lobby reset up and the door systems working. All that in anticipation of hopefully getting the renovation project back online. So that, we kind of gave that a rest for a year. We backed off. The voters told us what they thought. It's full speed ahead. It's a new year. The library is established. We're back into renovation mode and working towards that. So I don't know if I hit five minutes or not, but that's all I've got at this point in time.
You haven't beat the record.
Any other questions, concerns on the board?
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Are those arrests coming into convictions?
So Ezra, yes. Some of the, some of the bigger ones are hard to tell because we don't get the same timeframe out of the Superior Court as we do the District Court. So a lot of the stuff up at Super Court is pending trial at this point in time. A couple of those drug arrests, I know right off the top of my head, did plea right off the bat. And I'll take that every day of the week. If it saves my people going into court, I'm good with that. So, yes.
Thank you.
But to that end, the relationship with the contract prosecutor has been a very productive move for the town of Barrington. Prior to that, we had prosecution through the county, through the Sheriff's Department. The contract prosecutor, we hear from officers, is really helpful to make sure that their street work is productive, which leads to success down the road.
Okay, next up, Jamie Jennison, Building Inspector.
Hello from the Building Department. It's been a busy year for us. We have some new staff down that end of the hall. Kayla Piva is our new Building and Assessing Administrative Assistant, as well as Ralph Kleinman has been hired. Finally filled the position as a part-time building inspector. He's progressing nicely, working on certifications and studying, but we've already got him out in the field doing some inspections. So that's, that's helped out tremendously. The numbers show this is a staggering year. Quite a jump from 2022, a bigger jump from 2023, where there was a little lag, but I think that's attributed to open permits that weren't closed. Again, with our software, sometimes reporting is a little bit different, difficult how you query it, who enters it, what those pop up as. So some of the numbers can sometimes be misleading, but certainly this year with some of the bigger developments, the multi-units coming online, we see those huge numbers. Solar's kind of fallen off. I thought that was interesting. I don't know if some of the funds have gone away for some of, you know, some of, some of the people going into solar. But other than that, everything else is pretty consistent. ADUs are right around the same number. We usually get five or six a year, and I expect those to pick up. But with the cost of construction, it's really not. There's a tipping point on you're going to spend $300,000 for a little apartment to rent out, and what are you going to rent it for? So I, you know, everybody talks about it as being this solution to a lot of some of these housing issues, but with the cost of construction, there's really no good solution for housing issues right now. We're entering a new code cycle. The state has adopted the 2021 IRC, so that's come full swing January. So we're all adjusting to the new codes. Looking forward to having the ability to pay by credit card coming soon. And that's really it for our end. The only thing I missed that I should have probably looked into was some zoning violations and giving you the report on that. There's not a tremendous amount of activity. Usually, many of those things are around property line disputes, where we don't get involved, but we get the complaints. You know, someone put a fence or a shed or dog kennel on my property. Can you come out and tell them to move it? I try to lend a hand, knock on a door, and let people know that there may be an issue and try to get them to resolve it peacefully before it leads to something bigger. And we do have one in town that keeps coming back for a variance and, you know, an issue is with the zoning violation that's still yet to be resolved. But it's not a tremendous burden. You know, something important to know, but.[1780.10]
I know we, we're going with credit cards. That's awesome. But do you think that we're, and I know I'm rushing things, but if we're going to end up being online with permits, then.
Remains to be seen. A segue off another issue with the software, that we use the same software for other things in town that doesn't have the ability to go online. So changing to a completely different software for building permits without getting assessing and possibly land use into the same thing. So I think it's a little bit bigger project that may need a committee to look at and review at some point. I like the idea of it. I love that outward-facing portal for the customer to use. I've talked to other towns that had, had some issues with it. So finding the right one is always the challenge. And I, I do hope that someday that would come to fruition, but right now with the change in the Assessing Department, new staff, learning what we have now, probably not a great time to do it. But I think it's something that definitely would love to look at in the future.
You mentioned that your building permit numbers, either the numbers or a percentage of change?
Yeah, I apologize. I don't have percentages. You know, 2022, we had eight hundred total and we jumped a hundred and sixty-one to nine sixty-one in 2023. And we're about a thousand twenty-five right now. And again, some of that is, is due to the way they're entered. A good example is like someone puts in a mini-split. Someone might type it in as a mechanical permit, someone might type it in as an electrical permit. So when you query them, how you're pulling that stuff, the numbers may not represent actual stuff. But pulling straight new dwellings, we went from 2022 to 2024, we went thirty-seven, twenty-one, seventy-four. You know, so we had a little lull in 2021, but I, sorry, twenty-three, but I think that's because they just didn't have certificate vacancies and they all kind of piled up into this year. You know, the beginning of this year, they closed out a lot of them and then started a lot of new projects as well that might, you know, kind of tip the numbers one way.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
All I'll say is another great success story in succession management, right? So Jamie, resident of Barrington, served on the planning board in his chair. And when we had a vacancy in the deputy position, we were able to attract him to join the team and prepare to take over John's roles. John's role, another situation where there's big shoes to fill, but the department really hasn't skipped a beat. And that's a difficult job. You know, you think about the relationships with contractors and residents in the community. There's a lot that Jamie had to come into and get up to speed on. They've done that very, very well. And excellent feedback from the community and the folks that he works with, but also, like I said, haven't, haven't skipped a beat. An important department in the town and good succession plan in place.
Thank you.
Next up, Jessica Tennis, Parks and Rec.
Hot off a almost two-hour meeting with her rec commission, doing their future planning. So a meeting queen today. I thought George was going to bring us cupcakes, but we'll settle for rec magnets.
So those are our community ends for 2025. As you can see, they have our new logo, so we're trying really hard to kind of rebrand this year. Instead of other rebranding opportunities, we decided to kind of do with a magnet so people can have it in their face consistently as they walk by the refrigerator and just kind of, you know, I recognize that. So those are our 2025 dates. So I am not a very good presenter, so I wrote everything out on a piece of paper. So I'm just going to kind of go over some of the positive things that happened with Parks and Rec this year, also some of the anticipated hurdles that we have. And now that we're in 2025, we've got some pretty cool statistics now that we're able to kind of see the tracking from participants. So as many of you know, this is going to be my twentieth year within the department in a lot of different capacities. I can proudly say that 2024 was definitely our busiest and best year yet. We accomplished a lot of things. We were able to get a lot of opportunities kind of on the horizon. And so we're really looking forward to kind of, you know, taking those conversations that have been happening for ten or fifteen years and like really put them into fruition. So we're excited for that. Some of the larger things that we accomplished this year was the hosting our first event on the Barrington Town Common. We were able to host the, a portion of the soiree event out there where we had hundreds of people gathering around the event and really just kind of talking about exactly what we were really hoping for. That camaraderie, that, you know, communal space where people will be able to gather multi-generations. So that was really, really exciting to kind of see that through fruition and seeing the residents excited about that. The second is the community center upgrade. Going through that grant application was eye-opener for me to, I've never done that before. And so there was a lot of learning curves along that process. However, we, as you guys know, we were awarded the one million dollars and we're really excited to, again, kind of be putting those conversations pen to paper and really start getting that building up and running. So we're going to be continuing to work with, you know, you guys, the town administrator and other people, department heads to make sure that we're trying to limit the disruption to the community members while that transition is happening. But we're, we know that the short-term pain is going to be worth it in the long run. So. New programs and events. So we, we offered ten new programs this year, last year alone. So some of those were a really great success, similar to the fishing camp. We had about thirteen teens where we brought to local swimming, like local ponds, and we did a lot of fishing. We went to a fish hatchery and they got to kind of learn about like the restocking and like the life cycle of fish. And then the last Friday of the week, we ended up taking them on a deep sea fishing trip and they went out deep sea fishing and had a blast. So we actually have probably at least one phone call a day for people asking like, my kid told me that there was a fishing camp and they said it was through the rec. Is that true? And so we're really trying hard to kind of add two, potentially three weeks of that this year to kind of get more and more of those kids fishing. If you guys drive by the causeways of the Swains Lake, you see people just all up and down. So that was kind of where that idea came from. The evolution to a Parks and Rec Department and really just kind of, you know, continuing to make the needed improvements up on Ramsdale Lane and just kind of looking at, you know, other opportunities as they arise. And then the one that was most exciting for me was the resident participation. So not only in addition with those ten new programs, but just through the quality of the programs that we're offering, through the interactions that the staff are having with the community, we had a total of nine thousand eight hundred and seventy participants last year. That is an increase of two thousand four hundred and ten participants in one year, which is very, very, very good for a recreation department. A lot of that has to do with the summer concert series, but a lot of that also has to do with the fact that Fall Festival wasn't pouring. We had the pumpkin stroll, so we had a lot more people coming out for a lot of other features. So we've also increased our program participation numbers. So I think between some of those, you've seen that we've started to kind of work collectively with other people that haven't always used the rec department. So that's exciting. As we begin 2025, we will obviously be kind of dealing with the community center upgrades that we're going to be doing. Those are going to come with some growing pains. As you guys know, there's five of us that currently work in an office about quarter of the size of this room. So we work really, really well together, but a lot of our really thought process conversations happen, just like somebody makes a comment and next thing you know, we're in the guts of summer camp and we're dealing with the world problems. And so we're really going to have to kind of figure out how to get back to the drawing board, where everybody actually has their own space to kind of like have their own collective thoughts and then being able to bring those to the table and have that work within that new structure. So. And then, like I said, over the next couple of years, while we're kind of like paying off the TIF and working on that property, we're really going to be just really focusing on Ramsdale Lane. So you guys know about the pavilion that we did. So we're going to be looking at doing some additional upgrades and updates up there. Potentially having conversations about, you know, the old town hall lot, if that would be available for like a volleyball court, multi-use court, something like that. So really just trying to kind of like get us in a good spot so that way when additional funding opportunities or things come to fruition, we're at a good jumping off point and can kind of grab the bull by both horns. So. But besides that, I'm incredibly proud of my team. I've got a really great group and I definitely couldn't do it without them. Recreation is definitely a team sport, like all of you and like you guys are all part of that process. So yeah, busy year, but we're looking forward to 2025 and seeing where we go. So that's it.
Excellent. Thank you for all your hard work.
You're welcome.
The only thing I'll add, the 2019, the Recreation Department did a needs assessment strategic plan. And a lot of times these plans sit on a shelf and collect dust. And the Recreation Department is a perfect example of taking an investment in really productive planning and putting it into practice. If you go back and read that, by the end of 2025, we will have completed everything in some capacity.
Except for water access.
Except for water access. And so this, this is, it's remarkable, right?
Oh, given we had a pandemic in there.
No question.
Honestly, that was the silver lining. It really kind of gave us a little bit of time to actually get into the guts of why we do it. Was that just doing it the same because we've always done it that way? Or really trying to figure out like different, you know, options? So I think fortunately, unfortunately, COVID happened, but it gave us the time to actually go back and like get the, get the wheels moving. So.
And leadership change, right? Leadership change at the beginning of that. Jesse took over the department in early 2020. And so, yeah, it's a remarkable feat. And I think the future is really bright with recreation and the opportunities in Barrington.
So I had a question. So the energy efficient wall with the glass, that will be fixed as part of the.
Yeah, that's included in the community center grant that we're doing. So we're going to be making sure that that's addressed through the renovations that we're doing. So, yep.
And just thank you for all you do for community spirit. That's an important part of a community.
Yeah, absolutely. Of course. Thank you, guys. We really appreciate you guys participating in all the events. So. All right. Well, my time is up. I'll see you guys at the content period.
We'll do Jim Anderson next.
Okay, next up, Jim Anderson, Town Facilities Administrator.
I came here in '23. This new position that was created. So I'll try to tell you what I've, a quick overview of what I've done, what I've tried to accomplish and what we are moving towards. I set up regular record-keeping in the departments, what record-keeping of maintenance things like septic pumping, we're on quality water, water quality testing, generator maintenance, fuel depot checks, heating oil checks on the buildings, air and water filter changes, various things like that. Also established a maintenance program for the pavement of the facilities. The first year I was here, we did the ceiling of the public safety building and lining of the lines afterwards. This last year, we did the town hall parking lot and lined that also. So we're trying to work towards a facility every year. Capital improvements Plan was done this, this last year. And we're trying to implement that to look into the future of what needs to be done for various facilities. I oversee, saw the punch list of the town hall. Town hall was brand new when I came here, but there's still a punch list of things that need to be done. I'm also monitoring and involvement of the new library project. I'm on the building committee of that. So I'm overseeing that, try to stop in there every day to see what's going, try to answer questions of things and working on that. And I'm also on the, that'll be winding down probably in the June of this year. And I'm also on the building committee of the new recreation facility renovation. And that will be picking up this year and getting started. In the last year, we spent about twelve and a half percent more trying to keep up with the facilities custodial-wise, cleaning and trying to make more progress on deep cleaning and stuff that we've, have been lax at. You know, it's, we're going to gain another three thousand or so square feet in the rec department and we need to keep up with that somehow, too. So we're trying to work towards taking care of the facilities and not letting them, you know, decline. Also grounds maintenance. And '23 is the first year that we handle our own grounds maintenance for the town. We've got a lawnmower. We use the help from the Highway Department, labor force. We, from last year, from '23 to '24, it increased what we've done for grounds maintenance about thirty-six percent. And I foresee with the two new facilities that we took on this year, the Barrington Center and also the new library facility, that we're probably going to increase in the area fifty-five percent over last year, over '24. Just more maintenance that needs to be done. There's a few projects of improvement that we did last year. We put, did the generators, replacement at the public safety building and the new generator at the rec library building. I also mentioned, I already mentioned the seal coating, the public safety, for the public safety and town hall. Town hall, we put solar panels and those are up and running. Refurbished the Ron Landry sign at the Barrington Highway Department. The cabinets here, the, the storage cabinets here at the town hall. We did a secure window and entrance way for the administrative assistant at the fire department. And we added a second bathroom facility at the town highway department. That's kind of a quick overview of things. Do you have any questions for me?
Definitely a quick overview, but I know it's super frustrating rolling into something when, you know, maintenance hasn't been up to par on buildings. So really appreciate your, your best foot forward.
Do you have any figures out on ground maintenance? Like how much it's cost versus before when we contracted that out?
I don't have cost figures right in front of me. I know.
Are the trends?
The first year, we put in just under three hundred hours of grounds maintenance. This last year, it was almost six hundred hours and I figure it's going to be close to nine hundred hours for this coming year. There's a big area to be done at the Barrington Center that we need to keep up with for all the different things that are going to happen there. We have a truck show coming up and all the programs and things. And we have to keep up that and keep it very nice. It hadn't been done in a while. So it's, it takes some time to get it back to what it should be.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks for the coordination. Just want to add that it was recognized that you've been at all the Energy Committee meetings. And so thank you for all the expertise you bring to that. You're a great resource at finding energy efficiency for the town.
Yep, yeah, I attend all the Energy Committee meetings. And there's different projects that they're working on. Of course, the town hall is the biggest one that's been accomplished.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Kim K, Town Clerk.
I can't see my last name.
She's encountered that before.
Couple times.
Here it is. I mean, I.
Caracis, caracis. So the biggest thing is last year, we had all the elections. Our elections went fabulous. We had over eighty percent at the general, which was unheard of. I don't remember ever having it that high before. And the AccuVote machines, which are the voting machines, the new ones have been approved finally by the Secretary of State. We already have our invoice in, but they're not going to be ready until after our town election, of course. So we won't use them until next year. But I'll take possession probably summertime, mid-summertime. And I'm looking very forward to it. And I'm very glad we only have one election this year. It's very nice. And hopefully it won't be too eventful, just maybe high, high turnout, but not too, too high. Because we don't want to have photocopies. So. So also with the new machines that were acquired, I happen to have a quote that I kept that was like twenty-one hundred dollars less. And I pointed it out to them, so they made sure to honor that. Because I was like, whoa, hey, wait, that's not right. So they did fix that for us. Overall, we've had a five percent increase in revenue over the previous year. So that's really about a hundred thousand dollars. We did two point four million at the town clerk's office last year. Big thing I'm trying to look into is hunting and fishing licenses and OHRV and snowmobile registrations. I've started the process. They just got back to me about training, but it's like this week. So they didn't give me enough heads up because I really want all my staff to go to be able to all be trained because most of us know nothing about them, except nothing. So, but it would be, it would be nice to be able to do that. It doesn't bring a lot of revenue, but I think a lot of people, when they come and they do, we have so many lakes in town and we do boats now. So I think that would be helpful. And talking through with Connor, we were able to hopefully make that work. Credit cards, which I do have. In '23 is when we started them and we did about two hundred thousand dollars. So last year, we did about seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars total with credit cards. So I think it's been extremely successful. Very glad we got it. And then I just have some comparisons for, since 2020 to 2024, was a six percent increase in cars that we've done overall, thirty-five percent increase in marriages, sixteen percent in births, ten percent in dogs, and nineteen percent decrease in deaths for Barrington residents. But we put it in there. So Connor loves stats, so I just. Decrease, which is nice.
Well, death certificates, as measured by purchasing death certificates.
No, deaths in town.
Deaths in town.
Yes, because I have a death resident report I pull up.
Oh, no kidding? Nineteen percent reduction?
Yeah, how about that? I don't know how we do that. Because I'll, no, I don't know. Because they're moving.
Wait, does that mean births is not birth certificates, but it's actual births?
Yeah. Well, not births in town, Barrington residents.
Barrington.
Because, you know, I.
And the, the state collects that data?
Yeah, we have about.
And you have access to it?
Three or four home births for our small town, which I think is crazy.
Barrington growing life expectancy.
All right.
See that?
Are we a blue zone? Does that mean we're a blue zone? I think, I think by definition, that makes us a blue zone. That's terrific.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you very much for all your hard work and.
Questions, Bill?
Okay.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. And dog licenses are due by what date?
April thirtieth.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Mark Moreau, road agent.
License your dogs.
License your dogs.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Any idea who's turning seventy tomorrow? Well, Zevina Chi-Joy.
Because he turns seventy today.
Damn kids.
All right.
And we know that's too young for Rick.
So basically, the year in review, uh, it was a busy one for us. Uh, the real fun started a little before the first of the year. We had a real heavy wind-driven rainstorm that caused a lot of flooding townwide. Uh, the most serious of it being the washout of the old Settlers Road just north of the big culvert. Luckily, it took out the road and not the aging culvert itself. Uh, the crew was able to make repairs within four or five hours the following morning. People were stranded out there overnight, but it, it didn't become an issue. Um, wasn't as bad as it could have been, and we've since done some work to try to give the water a relief point so that when it does overtop, it kind of gets diverted away from the culvert structure, because it's easier to replace a washed-out road than it is a washed-out culvert. Um, luckily, this culvert is on the list of things to do in the foreseeable future, so it'll be nice to, nice to get that one done so as to not strand anybody else out there.
And that'll be 2025, right?
This year.
Yeah.
Yeah. So after this event, it was fairly quiet for a while. It's the usual run of snow, rain, ice, not much accumulation, which seems to be normal now. Um, atmospheric conditions have changed to the point where it's tough to find all the gr, right ingredients to produce a high snowfall like we used to have. The irony of it all is it takes the same amount of manpower and the same amount or more of salt to deal with what we get than if it just plain snowed a foot at a time. Uh, from a statistical standpoint, we've got eighteen separate winter events that required us to be called out. The biggest accumulation of the year was on April fourth and fifth. Uh, all the rest were very little snow turned to rain or icing events. Unfortunately, a steady string of these events will use just as much manpower and materials as, as the major storms will. Um, the optics get to be a little horrible when you, you know, you, you spend, you know, twenty to thirty hours on an expensive process with manpower, trucks, salt, and at the end of it all, most of the time, there's nothing on the ground to show for it. And you just look back going, what did we just do? Um, the art, the, um, problem with Barrington is it's topographically challenged. If this were a flatter town, you know, we could, you know, let the snow or the slush build up a lot more than we, than we do. But everything's a hill or a curve here, so we've kind of got to stay on top of it. There's just no choice. On March twenty-fourth, we got a freezing rain turned to snowstorm that brought down a lot of trees, limbs and power lines. We just started to clean that mess up when we got the only major snow event of the year on April third and fourth. This one was pretty devastating with the enormity of the tree and power damage. Uh, there were very few houses that had power in town after this one. And travel around town was challenging, to say the least. Uh, the highway department plow drivers spent as much time cutting and pushing trees out of the way as they did plowing snow. Uh, I gotta give credit to Eversource. Um, and this is not the only time that they've come to the rescue. Their response to the town of Barrington after this particular event was absolutely incredible. Um, they turned an extremely bad situation into a tolerable one quite quickly under miserable conditions. It was impressive to see the magnitude of the resources that they had assembled to take care of the situation. And then the highway crew spent until the end of April with two rented brush chippers just trying to clean up the carnage. So as luck would have it, the gravel roads didn't fare too badly. Uh, that's getting better every year. We're getting a handle on that. So we didn't have to spend a lot of time on those and dealing with the mud, uh, of previous years. So we were able to get started on replacing old rotted culverts prior to the year's paving program. Culverts were replaced on Second Crown Point Road, Ramsdale Lane and Hall Road. Reclaiming and paving began on the S-curve on Pond Hill Road and then moved to the further end of Second Crown Point Road. In the first part of June, we turned our attention to the hill on Ramsdale Lane. This section of road, which has been in a constant ta, state of deterioration, was gutted. We installed underdrain, two layers of stabilization fabric installed between multiple lifts of state specification road base and then paved. The underground stream or spring that plagued this area, we were able to kind of divert off to the ditch lines and, uh, try to keep, keep as much of the water out from under the roadbed as possible, which is what caused the damage in the first place. That whole road is scheduled to be overlaid in the summer of 2025. This road takes a lot of traffic because of the ECLC, library and rec center, so it was worthy of attention. And we also paved the entire length of Hall Road, three and a half miles. So after this, the highway crew was called upon to clean up and mow the new TIF property that was recently acquired by the town. It was a pretty dismal sight when we first landed there. There were years of blown down branches, dead trees. It had to cut to make the place even walkable, much less drivable. Uh, we then existed, extended the existing town parking lot from where we stopped two years ago. Twelve hundred tons of new material went into that parking lot. Uh, this was a substantial transformation for something that started out looking so hideous and so hopeless looking. Uh, this lot will give residents a place to park, to not only enjoy the new Barrington Commons area, but also allow easy access to the stores, summertime events in this area. And to top off the acquisition of the property, we got a surprise request from the Granite State chapter of the Antique Truck Club of America to return the Barrington Truck Show to this property where it started back in nineteen eighty-seven. This was always a great draw for the town and was sorely missed when it had to leave. The show ended up in various locations over the years. I followed it, but it was never the same. It wanted to come back home. And it feels really good to have it back here. It's where it belongs. So one of our longtime residents, the late, great Donald Smith, along with his wife Marilyn, they were a driving force behind the show being here in the first place and securing its continuing existence when it went elsewhere. So I could think of a no more fitting tribute to Mr. Smith than to have this labor of love back here. This is a good thing. In late August, we turned our attention to the rec department. Their new pavilion needed a level gravel pad constructed to contain the structure. Much discussion arose about where to place the structure, because topographically it wouldn't work where it was originally intended to go. So it was finally decided to put it where it is in the existing gravel parking lot, and it kind of looks better there anyway. So the highway department and rented excavator hauled and spread gravel for a week steady to meet the deadline of the building contractor, and all came out well. Crisis averted. Currently, we just received delivery of another new six-wheel plow truck. It is currently at the upfitter shop waiting to get rigged. This is slated to replace our 2011 plow truck, which will be retained and used to spread shoulder gravel and to be a spare plow unit. Our current 2004 spare plow truck will then be auctioned. The plan is to order another truck in 2025 if the funds are made available to replace our older 2013 unit. When this happens, it'll mean that the entire old and increasingly un, undependable fleet that was here six years ago when I arrived will have been upgraded. So thanks to the generosity and forward-thinking of this and previous select boards and the residents that voted up the warrant articles to purchase them, we have a fleet that we can be proud of. This isn't possible in a lot of other towns. I hear the horror stories. Some of these people are forced to run outdated, under-equipped and unmaintained equipment, either because of lack of funding or the lack of recognition for the need of the funding. We're fortunate to have the equipment we need to keep the town safe. As always, I'd like to thank both police and fire departments for working together with us, uh, when the weather gets bad and things go sideways. Uh, words can't describe what all three departments had to go through last April. It was just plain horrible. It's a big help to know that these people have our backs no matter what. So now I'll move on to the Swains Lake Dam. This year, the actual dam gatehouse s, upper structure, the actual building that you see, got new shingles, new vinyl trim boards, couple of coats of paint. The, uh, structure had to be squared up and braced because it got a little crooked sitting there in all that wind for all them years. Um, we still are engineering the repairs on the underwater gate structure and the installation of the riprap filter on the wet side of the dam. We're looking for the repairs to be done at the two thousand, uh, 2025 drawdown. After these repairs are done, the entire dam should be in real good shape for a long time. So in closing, I'd like to say how happy I am that there's a townwide transportation and infrastructure bond being considered to be able to repair the many problem areas, mostly culverts in many different areas of town. We're currently ongoing engineering on most of these so that a lot of them will be shovel-ready sometimes relatively soon. Unfortunately, most of these are on heavily traveled roads, so a catastrophic failure and subsequent road closure would have a ripple effect that would be far-reaching, from altered school bus routes to a lot of other routes taking more traffic than they should for people to get around the closure. One of the worst culverts is, uh, the only outfall from Swains Lake into the Bellamy River, um, which is seriously affecting the rate of drawdown of Swains Lake. Uh, if there were ever a need for an emergency drawdown, we couldn't do it without washing out a road and stranding thirty-some odd people. So this one's important. We just received FEMA funds for the engineering on this crossing. Um, so a properly funded, engineered and planned closure and replacement of these structures will be a huge step in meeting Barrington's future needs, which will be upon us before we know it. So the town's evolving at a rapid pace, and we really need to stay vigilant in our infrastructure to support it. Uh, this bond will be a giant step in the right direction, and I applaud your decision to consider tackling these tough but necessary projects. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Next up, fire chief Rick Walker.
Sounds like your wallet's gonna be bleeding. I don't know.
No, my wallet, I'm, I'm getting ready to be on a fixed income, so I'm gonna vote no on every.
Pass out coupons out.
Right. Um, in 2024, fire and rescue department, um, we did twelve hundred and fifteen calls for service. Um, the majority of them, uh, seven hundred and fifty-four of them were EMS calls, four hundred and sixty-one were fire-related calls. That's about a five-point-three percent increase over last year. Uh, broken down a little further was a four-and-a-half percent increase on EMS calls and a, about a six-point-seven increase on fire-related calls. Um, I think the big increase in the fire-related calls was, as Mike alluded to, a couple of them storms we had last winter, uh, or I should say late winter, early spring, uh, a lot of tree work, um, bumped our numbers up. And, uh, the, uh, twenty-four percent of the total fire-related calls, or a hundred and ten of them, were either motor vehicle accidents or ambulance assist. So, um, as we get, the, the way we do our, excuse me, the way we do our numbering, uh, currently log this stuff, uh, we separate EMS and fire. Uh, but twenty-four percent of that was out covering, uh, basically assisting the ambulance. Um, talked a little bit about the storm events, heavy wet snowstorm and a windstorm that helped make up a little over twenty-eight percent of our calls for limbs on wires, trees down with wires, or in some cases, wires down. Um, mutual aid. We received mutual aid from other communities forty-eight times. Many times, those were multiple communities assisting together at the same time. We had a, uh, we had a pretty significant structure fire on Easter Sunday that brought in, uh, that went to a thermal alarm. So that brought in, um, a lot of communities, uh, to help. Um, Rochester assisted us fifteen on fifteen different occasions last year. Lee, um, on eleven occasions, Madbury nine, Durham five, Stratford three, and one each from Dover, Lebanon, Nottingham, Rollingsford and Somersworth. And, uh, I believe that, uh, the, uh, Lebanon, Nottingham, Rollingsford, Somersworth, uh, all came up for that Easter Sunday structure fire. Um, we provided mutual aid, um, to the town of Lee on eleven occasions, Rochester six, Madbury five, Stratford four, Nottingham three, and one each to Bonstead, Deerfield, Dover, Durham, Epping, Newmarket and Northwood. Um, we'd be in serious trouble. All of us would be the area. Um, we need each other for mutual aid. Um, if I look back a little bit to, um, forty-six or forty-seven or fifty-seven years ago, when I started doing this stuff, um, a couple of communities, Barrington could have a fire and, uh, bring in a couple of communities that have, uh, between Barrington and a couple of towns coming in to help us, thirty people. You try to get thirty people at an event today, um, you, it'll, it'll take six or eight towns to get that many. Um, they're just, there's just not that many people doing it, and there's less and less volunteers. So, um, we, we have millions of dollars' worth of equipment sitting on the side of the road, but most of it's just being used as a taxi to get the people, um, to wherever the emergency is. Um, we started the year, you folks are well aware of it, we started the year fully staffed with our, uh, four full-time firefighter EMTs and, and full-time fire chiefs. In April, we lost a full-time firefighter EMT to the town, city of Portsmouth, and we were ne, never able to fill that position. And one or two tire kickers, um, but never, ever had anybody come to fill an application out for that job. So that job stayed open, and my three dedicated remaining full-timers, um, did everything they could to pick up the slack for that one position. Um, in September, we lost a, a fire, a full-timer, put us down to two, two full-timers, and then in October, we lost a third one, uh, leaving one full-timer and a fire chief. Um, and that's when, uh, thanks to support from town administrator MacIver and the board. And that's when, thanks to support from Town Administrator MacIver and the board, we instituted a new pay rate for part-time employees, which in effect, we were able to provide more hourly money for the part-timers coming into work and still having it be cheaper than what it was costing us for full-time benefits. I'm happy to say that that has been more wildly successful than I thought it would be. We're getting our shifts filled. Certainly, I'd be interested to see what happens in the summertime when, when people want to use more vacation time, so we may depend on a little more overtime, but right now, we're doing pretty well. Our current call force consists of about 14 people, 50% of them are reasonably active. History suggests this number will continue to go down. There just aren't people beating the doors down that want to come in to be volunteers or call members, and that's for a variety of reasons. I think people are pulled in so many different directions, there's so much more for people to do with families and both parents needing, most of the time needing to work. So consequently, the ability to invest the amount of time. And to kind of put it in perspective, I told you 1,215 calls. 1978, when I joined the Fire Department, we were doing about 50 calls a year. And I can remember going two or three weeks at a time, not, not having a call, and we were all getting nervous because, you know, if we went a week, you go, eh, you know, ten days, you're like this, but boy, if you went a couple of weeks, you say, we're gonna get, we're gonna get hit. So I think that's an issue too. You know, if you're looking at 50, 60 calls a year or an average of one a week, and now we're, now the Fire and Rescue Department is averaging a little over three a day, every day. And certainly, we have days where we don't turn the wheel. And so what's that mean? Because of the way the averages work out, we're gonna have days where we go out six or seven times. So them all play into the reason why call members, and this is countrywide, it's just, it's not Barrington problem, it's not a New England problem, it's countrywide. There just aren't the people stepping up to do it. I talked to a guy today that wants to be a full-timer and I'm like, you're getting into this at the right time because there's more jobs than there are people to fill them. So, you know, you're gonna be able to pick where you want to go. When we hired our first full-timer a number of years ago, we had 20 applications. I would say 10 of them were quality candidates. So, you know, we selected one and had to tell some other good people that they didn't have a job. The last, about a year ago, I hired a full-timer in September and the guy came in and talked to me in August and he interviewed me, I didn't interview him. He says, I'm talking to you, I'm gonna talk to one other community, we'll see who offers me the most and maybe I'll come back. And that's kind of the way it is today. It's, we're not interviewing them, they're interviewing us. But anyway. In, we ordered the new forestry truck that was delivered finally in early January. Ford had a pretty significant backlog. It finally made it to McFarland Ford in Rochester. It then had to go down to Massachusetts to have the rear body put on. There was, I think it said at McFarland for about a month and a half till the body was ready so they could send it down and put on. We, the town took delivery of it in early January. It's currently down to New England Vehicle Outfitters in Newington, having the equipment, radios and lights and stuff put in it. Hoping any time now to get a call from them to come down and pick it up. And then once we get it back here, I will get with Mike Signs and Designs here in town to get a, get a thing set up, to get it lettered up. So we're guardedly optimistic that by mid to late February, we will have that. We'll have that in place and be ready to dispose of the old forestry truck. Again, my thanks to you folks for, well, two things. One, thank you to the voters for consistently supporting funding for the replacement of vehicles and thank you for the support of the Board of Select, Select Board. I almost, I stopped.
I'm excessively proud of you.
I thank the Select Board for their commitment to allow us to get that vehicle replaced. In October of 24, I finally finished the process. We hired our first administrative assistant with help from TA MacIver and Deb Wood. The three of us met with, I don't know, four or five candidates and selected Leah Prue. She's doing a great job for us. She currently works 20 hours a week. Her typical office hours are Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 11:30. As Jim or George or both of them said, the window from her office got installed in the lobby last week, got finished. So that'll make her job a little bit easier. We'll get the front lobby set up so people can come in during those hours and she'll be the first person that she sees. We started the year in 2024 with a $998,281 budget and closed out the year with an $84,523 surplus. I'm not gonna take credit for that. A good percentage of that was the fact that we lost that full-time employee in April. So his, that person's salary and the benefits package probably made up more than that $88,000. The, we had a couple of lines that were considerably overspent. One, the vehicle maintenance line was 200% over and the equipment maintenance line was about 300% over. In both cases, we had significant unplanned costs. The pickup truck, we had to have a heater core put in it right near the end, you know, right near the end of the year when we needed the heat the most. That was about a $1,500 job. The forestry truck had the clutch put in it in the summer, that was 2,500 bucks. Again, neither one of those jobs, they weren't, it wasn't lack of planning on the budgeting pot, it was sometimes that stuff happened. So we didn't purchase as much equipment as we would have, which is typically the way I operate. I've always kind of used the equipment line as, as done my equipment purchases whenever I could at the end of the year so that, like this year, if we start getting tight money-wise, we can stay within our budget. I'm not a, I'm not opposed to coming and asking for money if I need to, but, you know, I try real hard to make sure we stay within the confines of our budget. On a positive note, we are currently sitting at two full-time firefighter EMTs and I expect to, we have a little paperwork snafu. On the third one, I expect that to be squared away within about the next two weeks. So I was hoping we'd be at three full-time employees beside myself, but we're getting everything covered.
Excellent. Thank you for all your hard work.
And I got my smart goals all done. I'm gonna turn this over to Town Administrator and it's probably gonna be a lot of Holly therapy, but that's what I'm doing.
And if you want Rick's job.
Yeah, if anybody wants my job.
Fly by February 25th.
Price is right, 10 o'clock, okay?
Thanks, Rick.
Last but not least, Vanessa Price, Town Planner.
Don't worry about it, I'm keeping score.
I know I didn't talk to all of you. I can't do anywhere.
Okay, you're all right. We got, we got our own problems. Go ahead.
I'm sure I will not be as entertaining as the last few folks, but the land use department for 2024, we do more than, we do subdivision plans, site plans, permits, grant writing, contract administration for construction progress, projects, meeting with prospective developers and engineers, and acting as a principal contact for individuals searching for information on property and land use codes. We also provide staff support to the Planning Board, the Zoning Board and Conservation Commission and the Trails Committee. So I, I'm gonna condense a little bit. I have three reports, and one is for the land use department, one would be the Planning Department, one for the ZDA. So I'll just give you a little bit more information on what the land use department worked on. As you all may or may not know, I attend the technical advisory committees with SRPC for long-range transportation planning projects. And this past year implemented, it's called the Technical Review Group, established as an advisory group to assist and advise the Planning Board and land use applications. We had done this in practice in general with our department heads, but wanted a more formal process. That way, there could be more involvement from the consultants and from the town engineer on larger projects. The Planning Board adopted the TRG on April 16th of 2024, so from that point on, we meet monthly if we have new applications. Some of you may have already participated, but as you know, on the June 12th in 2024, our department in conjunction with the Planning Board members and the Zoning Board members held a community outreach meeting. What do land use boards do? I know it wasn't necessarily well-attended, but this coming year, I'd like to try to organize that again. That way, people that are interested in what we do, we being land use department, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, can get more information and that's also a time for people to come and discuss what's on their mind, any suggestions or input about zoning and regulations. Working with the Planning Board, they had a robust agenda as we do, every year if you like, but it's a great working group, updating subdivision regulations, establishing a subcommittee with the SLEC Board, the Planning Board for Master Information Group, focusing on the conservation subdivision regulations, helped overseeing and finalizing the master plan chapter and the multiple sessions of proposed zoning amendments for the 2025 vote. We had working groups starting in September, all the way up and to the public hearing in January 7th. Another big portion that our department helps out with is the annual revision of the Capital Improvements Program, started in preparation in July 2024. As you know, this program is proposing a spending plan for capital items based on community needs, fiscal capability, and coordinating the scheduling of public capital expenditures like this year, as well as the Planning Board in conjunction with the SLEC Board, that doing a working group next year would help establish the funding plan a little bit earlier and the joint, joint meeting to establish that for next year. Just a few things, I'm not gonna rehash on the Planning Board, I've kind of already mentioned the TRG group and the, and the regulation review. In 2024, we had 46 cases totally come to be heard at the Planning Board, 43 applications were completed, meaning they met conditional approval, at the very least. And in relation to the applications, of the hearing of the subdivision site plans, adding to the housing stock, creating 45 new residential units, worked with the Building Department to get the figure for that. Those are structures that are anticipated under construction now and through 2025. Just to touch on the regulation review, it was also partnered with Engineering and Highway, Fire and Safety to help with those updates on the subdivision site plan regulations. Some of the examples are to better establish modification to a sub, to an approved plan, what does that mean? Fire protection requirements for cisterns and addressing. There's a lot other I can go into, but it's updating also like our contract for our town engineer due to construction projects and what that may mean. And in the Zoning Board this year, they had heard over 18 applications, which included 13 variances, two special exceptions, an appeal for administrative decision, one equitable waiver, and one was withdrawn. And with that, if anybody has any questions?
Any other questions, comments? Lots of stuff.
Lots of stuff. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you for your hard work. Okay, I believe that closeouts, department heads for our review. Thank you all for your hard work and coming in and making Barrington great.
What a tremendous team, right? So I think this is a really productive exercise and really more impactful than just talking about budgets, right? To hear the work that the team does.
Hugely impactful. And gives us an opportunity to show the public, here's where every, yeah, very impactful.
Yep. Your 17% of your tax rate affects all of those services in the community. And we heard about the core services, 80%, right? 80% of what Barrington residents pay goes to police, fire and highway.
Yeah.
And the impacts they have on the community, and we heard how great they work together.
Yep. Great job, everybody.
Thank you guys. Alrighty, next up on the docket here is Consent Agenda.
I know that we accept the Consent Agenda A through G for 27 January 2025 meeting as presented.
Second, roll call.
Patrick.
Participate.
Capelloi.
Usainai.
Sakoshai. Next up is, I assume this is still the same appointed in elected terms.
Yes, so we'll start the discussion process for those appointments at the February 10th meeting.
February 10th meeting. Okay.
Excellent, and then that's gonna bring us on to staff reports.
Yes, I won't read through the work anniversaries at our second meeting here in January. Moving on to town meeting information, as we all know, the warrant has been finalized. That warrant and all of the details is available at barrington.nh.gov/2025warrant. The most, the largest component of that warrant is the operating budget, which is Article 15 this year. All 300-plus pages of that electronic budget binder, very well organized with summary documents and more, is available at barrington.nh.gov/2025budget. The Advisory Budget Committee, we heard, played a larger role in the budget development process. All of those meetings are available. The link to the video playlist is in the Town Administrator Report. The voters will vote on elected positions as Article 1 on March 11th, and the signup period is open right now from January 22nd to January 31st. So anybody interested in an elected position in Barrington can visit the Town Clerk's Office. The deliberative session, the first of the two sessions of our town meeting, is this Saturday, the 1st of February, starting at 9:00 AM in the middle school. This year, the town's deliberative session will be in the auditorium. Excuse me. So that shift in venue will save on some of the setup and breakdown costs and time. We certainly don't anticipate exceeding the capacity of the cafeteria, which has been the concern in the past, so we'll be up on stage in the cafeteria on this Saturday morning. I have included in your packet for your information... I have included in your packet for your information and input, the draft deliberative session schedule. So this establishes, the moderator leads this meeting. He opens with opening remarks, introduction of officials. Select Board Chair Jim Sakosha will read the select board's opening remarks and lead the group in the pledge. The moderator will go over rules of procedure, and then we'll go into the individual articles. Election of officers, the moderator will just present. Zoning amendments will be discussed at the end. Those can't be amended at the deliberative session, but then we'll go through Articles 15 to 28. I will present the budget and answer any questions, and then the remaining warrant articles are split up among select board members for you all to present. These details are available, you know, summarized in this document, but I have printed copies of those notes and it'll be part of the PowerPoint presentation. It just kind of goes over what the contribution is, what we plan to use the funds for, et cetera. And so I just kind of scattered around, tried to pick warrant articles that maybe select board members had worked on or with, but happy to change any of those if there's any input or concerns about those. Not seeing any, so we'll plan to finalize the schedule. After we get through all the business articles, the planning board chair, John Driscoll, will present on the zoning articles for a discussion only, question and answer, and then we will complete the meeting. I expect it'll be a much shorter meeting this year than in recent years. There aren't many topics that would likely bring about a lot of discussion, like the library bond or tax increment financing, or some of the other topics that have led to longer conversations in the past. So that's deliberative session. Before I move on from that, select board members should plan to arrive a little early, get settled in so we can get a prompt start right at nine. Any questions or concerns deliberative session related?
You'll have our notes for us for.
Yes.
Are you going to mention the cuts from recommended by the advisory budget?
Yes. I will. Yep, excellent question. So a few of the components that I'll include, kind of different than years past, will be a more complete discussion about the budget development process, kind of where it starts and how it's trimmed down to the, what voters see, and then some focus on the Tiff district and the revenues and what that has, has looked like, what that has generated, and a couple of other pieces of feedback from the budget committee.
Can you be sure to, in the session, mention tonight's meeting so that should residents in the town like a one hour and 20 minute summation of where your tax dollars were spent, this is a great way for them to listen in and quickly extract all the work that's been done.
Excellent point. Yep, we can share that video out, reference it then. So that's deliberative session. You have in your, that I handed out at the beginning of the meeting, the voter guides, the community voter guide. So this is a document which will be updated with any, to reflect any changes following deliberative session. We'll probably wait to print a lot of those until after both deliberative sessions are done, just so we make sure that we're not creating copies that are quickly out of date. But we will have, there are copies available at all the posting locations, the post office, the schools, et cetera, and we'll have some copies of the deliberative session as well. For most folks, we encourage them to review it online, barrington.nh.gov/2025voterguide. And that's going to be a really helpful tool. Couple of changes this year. We have the school content in the yellow pages, the golden rod pages, and then the very, very last page is a reference guide. So the idea being that residents can go through the voter guide in the comfort of their own home, circle on that reference guide, how they intend to vote, and then they can just take that one sheet in to vote with them.
Excellent.
These have to be the best voter guides in the state every year.
I think so.
Who does all this formatting?
I do.
It's excellent.
Thank you. Yep, I appreciate that feedback.
Send an example to Allison Ryder if you're interested in it.
No, we, we have heard a tremendous amount of feedback far outside of Barrington about the voter guide we put together. And it's, it's really, it's reflective of our commitment, our collective commitment to entrust the voters to make these decisions and provide as much information as possible so they can make an informed decision.
Great toolkit.
Thank you. Okay, so now the next document in your packet is a review of the 2024 strategic planning goals. And so this doesn't have to be a lengthy discussion tonight, but I wanted to make sure that we memorialize that, this progress in a way that, that we could build on moving forward.
It was exciting to read through this, by the way, and to realize everything that has been accomplished. It, it, yeah, it was.
We've been busy.
We have been busy. Leadership of this board has allowed us to accomplish so much and, really, and there's a lot on the horizon, right? So this is organized just with a little bit of background, a review of the goals, just kind of itemized and how we, how and when we completed them. These are the goals we set at the April 8th strategic planning session, and the couple that are in progress at the end, three-year and five-year goals are still in progress, expectedly. And then the area of master plan implementation, that project we kind of picked up over the summer, and where we are with that, the progress we've made with one of the zoning articles that will be voted on, Article 2, changes to the conservation subdivision regulations. And then I created this goal parking lot, the idea being at the April 7th, 2025 meeting, I expect we'll have another strategic planning session similar to what we did last year. And that's where we'll, we'll build from this and build the full list of goals moving forward in that strategic planning session. But I encourage you all between now and then to certainly add your own notes to this parking lot so that when we get to that April meeting, we can really dig into the, what the priorities are, how they all fit together, and how we want to build off our progress from the last year. Other thoughts or comments about this one? Continue to move on. Perfect. So Barrington Chief transition, I just wanted to give you all an update. As we know, the chief's retiring in June. The position is advertised at barrington.nh.gov/firechief. So we've cast a pretty wide net. We're already receiving applications from across the country for the position. So the, the application materials are, that we have advertised are pretty comprehensive to help potential applicants understand the job that we're looking to have filled. Please.
A Seacoast Fire Chief that I had spoken with had reviewed that, and it was extremely positive response in what you had created. He said, "Any applicant applying for this position knows exactly what is in front of them with this role." So that was really positive feedback.
That's terrific feedback. Thank you for sharing that. It's, you know, there aren't a one-size-fits-all solution to positions like a fire chief, and, you know, investing the time now to attract the right person, I think will pay dividends to the community in the future.
Absolutely.
So two points on that. We have worked with the core of officers, and over the next coming months, we'll do like an institutional knowledge download from Chief Walker to that group of officers. We have a list of many, many job tasks in the fire department that Chief Walker has basically done himself for 20 some odd years. And so he will start to train up this core group of officers so that there's some redundancy in that knowledge base. So I'm tremendously appreciative of the officers for their work on that. And then also, we're going to implement an officer-on-call program where there's an officer to call on, especially during the weekend hours. So this is Ben Chief Walker, and we need to start changing the culture. And it's, it will be to the benefit of the next chief that we start changing that culture now. And so the officers will be on call. The specific details are yet to be determined, but they'll be on call to respond to the duty crew. If they have a question, they need direction, or certainly if there's an event, they're, they will be expected to respond and be the officer responsible for the scene.
Can I have the money for that?
Correct. Yes. Yep, excellent question. So Barrington Kids Vote and the 2026 I Voted sticker design contest, so this won't be a surprise to anybody. This is one of the favorite things that we do for me. This, we will absolutely be continuing the Barrington Kids Vote program in 2025. So last year, we had 424 kids vote. I hope we get more kids this year. Really exciting. Last year, we instituted the local I Voted sticker design contest. So those stickers, we're in the process of getting printed right now. Tiffany just got some samples. Oh, terrific. She has, so, so we have some sample stickers to make sure that we liked them and that they, you know, were of good enough quality. So we will be getting all four designs printed up. The, the designers will actually be coming to the, and their families will be coming to the March 3rd select board meeting. So we'll have the chair present them with a certificate expressing our appreciation. We're going to get some other, you know, little recognition items for them in the work that they did in designing those stickers. And they also plan, each of them plan to come hand out their stickers to voters for a portion of the voting day, which will be really, really exciting. So the 2026 sticker design contest is being advertised right now. So until February 25th, kids of all ages can submit sticker designs, which will be voted on, on the 2025 Kids Vote ballot. Obviously, as fun as this is, I believe it's genuinely impactful in, in two main ways. One, certainly exposing the youth of America to the civic process and getting them familiar with how we do government and how important their role is in that. But two, very much, I believe this process is impactful for voter turnout. We had a record-setting, not just in Barrington, but in the state, a record-setting voter turnout at our local election with 41% of our registered voters. I'm challenging the community to break that record this year. We won't have as much of interest to vote on in the town ballot. The school ballot has the teacher contract. Zoning is certainly something that could draw people up to the polls, but I'd like to see that 41% be, be broken in 2025. That'd be very exciting. Ready to move on from that?
Yep.
Fantastic. I listed a couple of training opportunities in here. More longer-range planning, but the local official workshop in virtual, in-person and virtual. There'll be a session April 24th that will take place in Concord and virtually, and then June 5th, which will be up in Jaffrey, and also virtual. And then the NHMA conference, which I know a lot of you attended this last year, will be in November, November 19th and 20th. So mark your calendars if you're available, and that's all I have.
Excellent. M O A C, I believe we signed something already for you?
Oh, Mike, yes.
Just an intent to cut for map 241, lot 41. That's it.
And we have an updated, you remember the, the homestead development part of what changed was the, where the conservation property was? We have a conservation, updated conservation easement deed, which was approved by the Attorney General's Office, Chair of Trust Division, and the select board will, can sign that tonight before we go. So that was just dropped off today.
Okay. No old business, so that moves us right down to new business. And brings us to the employee total compensation 2025 study, where I know we've done wage studies for other departments, but this is going town-wide. Any discussion?
Yep. So I gave a bit of thought to this. The one thing you never want to do when it comes to total rewards is approach a study and not be ready to potentially implement with an action plan that study. So if we feel that residents would not embrace what we're bringing forward, we need to be mindful of that because it would be very non-validating to employees if we're not ready to implement something. The other part to this, I'm hoping that we, I know we want to look at the entire town. Well, I know that many of you do. The other part to this is we have promised the police we will respond to them, that we will conduct the study. So if we're not going to separate the two, we need to ensure that we're going to have results to be able to work with the police department.
Cost to do the study, to put it out there, is about 18,000, and it would take four to six months to.
I just want to be clear, what did we pay in 2019?
In 2019, we paid a little over $8,000.
So in looking at total rewards, it gets a little more muddy because different departments calculate paid time off, or they break it down by holiday vacation, sick time. So there's, there's a little more to these studies when you're looking at the total rewards package. The other part to this is, in looking at that ratio of salary to benefits, it is very, very difficult to ever take anything away from an employee that you've given them. There is, there is nothing positive about it. And just be prepared if you come back and find out that we are much richer in our approach to those benefits, be ready to react to that information is all I'm saying ahead of the game of this. If you implemented a study five years ago and you've kept up with cost of living increases, there should be very little that becomes shocking because I don't think a board has gone by without doing cost of living increases.
The, the first couple of years after the 2019.
Was this potentially the years I was not sitting on this?
But I'll also point out.
So I just want to say this, you should be up to date. You should have nothing that comes back from that study with salaries that is glaringly shocking. Go ahead.
I don't think there will be anything that'll be glaringly shocking. I will say that in 2019, I think the, the board was very productive in the approach to adjusting wages and benefits to reflect the recommendations from the study. And so at that time, we reduced the level of earned time accrual. We reduced the availability for earned time buyout. Those were a couple of the categories which the, the total reward study found that we were more generous than the market. We also used that opportunity to bring wages up to the market as well. And so I think it will absolutely be something that has to be managed very specifically. One of the benefits of starting the process as early as, as we may do that is, to your first point about support from the community, is more of an opportunity to engage the community in understanding what to expect in the 2026 budget development and budget approval process. And so, you know, that longer on-ramp will only serve to give us more opportunities to engage with residents about what it is we might be suggesting they approve.
And I just want to say this, and I think in all fairness, you know, everybody wants to see everybody being, you know, making a fair wage and whatnot.
Correct.
But also, you know, we, we don't necessarily, you know, an outcome of that is, you know, higher taxes.
No question.
Yes.
You know, that's the odd self in the room, so. Just discussion tonight. Nothing's, nothing's going to move. We can.
Yeah, I think we're going to see, I think we are in a climate right now where we're going to see some very drastic changes economically, both coming from the federal level to the state level and trickling down to our municipal level. And I, I think we need to be really aware of that and the fact that there's going to be a lot more, what I think, laid before municipal levels. And so I just, I think we've done a really good job of making sure that we are providing that competitive salary structure. Above and beyond that, I hope that the employees within the town feel appreciated for their hard work.
I believe they do.
Because I think we have a pretty darn incredible group that work for Barrington.
And it's growing.
Yeah, and Barrington is growing, and, and I, I think keeping on top of this will be important. Just please don't ever do a study and then say, oh, we can't afford to do this. I realize that's up to the residents to decide.
Well, and that's something to think of too, because I mean, just listening to the department heads tonight, I mean, one of the things was more help, more, keep more help.
Also, we, we haven't talked about that, we wouldn't be putting this up to bid, or at least that's proposed table, and we.
Yeah, and so I'd be happy to. So there are likely, there are likely efficiencies to be gained by building off the work. So there are likely, there are likely efficiencies to be gained by building off the work that was previously done, if we are satisfied with it. And so the, that isn't an automatic. I'll also say that in the municipal sphere, there aren't a lot of organizations that do kind of municipal-specific total reward studies. You know, MRI as an organization has built the database, right? They have efficiencies. They're able to offer such a comprehensive total reward study at such a really affordable price, 18,000.
I think we should still put out the RFP.
Yep, and we certainly could, yeah.
Put it out, and I think if nothing else, it likely will reflect what we found the first time, which, you know, in, in response to this, I was very aware of MRI as a potential responder to that RFP five, six years ago and had some really strong ideas about different groups that could provide us with really quality data. This particular group, in the, in their response to the RFP, in researching the people that they put in charge of the actual project management, they were excellent, so.
But no, that's certainly something that we can do at the board's direction. And so the process moving forward, I can, at the February 10th meeting, it'd be a little bit of a tight turnaround, but I can try to get a draft RFP for the select board to review, see the scope, and try to get that advertised with the select board's support. So do we want to try to put it on for a vote on the 10th? Or is there other piece of information other than the draft RFP that you'd all like to see beforehand?
I just wanted to ask Tracy, were you sort of implying it might be better to wait until after the election to get a pulse?
Yes.
Of the voter?
I'd concur with, I like that.
Yeah. That is what I'm implying, like, let's see where things shake out, right? People are nervous right now, and they're not nervous because of Barrington. They're nervous because of external factors to our municipality, so I think.
Yeah. I don't, normally my preference is to go, you know, broad net across all departments. However, this, we just did a recent one and resulted in increases in 23. And we are fairly current, as you're saying. The police one has risen to, because of the special discipline, a unique gap that needs to be addressed, right?
Maybe.
Could be.
We could be, yeah, it could be. But then again, maybe not.
But, but, but looking into that is what needs to be addressed, right?
Yes.
I agree, there's a lot of unknowns, and I think the, because we've had paid for these kinds of assessments, if we had a, a gap year, we as a community could decide the economy's doing well, you know, the tide is shifting, and we can figure out cost of living, put it to the voters to kind of stay ahead or, or based on whatever metrics we're seeing nationally, locally. It doesn't necessarily have to be based on a plan either in a gap year.
If you, if you told me that of the 58 positions that were originally looked at, that you, I mean, you've reshuffled some of the essential position functions in finance, but if you said to me that of those 58 positions, at least 20% have had expansions to their essential position functions, and as you're doing reviews, you're constantly seeing position descriptions changing, then I would say that your study could potentially be outdated that you have by not applying cost of living and step increases. But if you have applied step increases in cost of living, and you haven't seen a large number of those position descriptions change, you can potentially wait a year or two more. That's my answer.
Well, I was going to dissent a little bit here. We promised police, at least, that we would do, that we were going to do this. And I think that by implication, I think everyone else in this business, everyone else in the, in the town believes we're going to do this. I would suggest maybe we want to do this earlier rather than later.
For the police.
For everyone.
So are you saying before the election?
Right.
And just real quick to the point about the 2022 wage study. So I think the, the impetus for me in looking at this in 2025 is the dramatic growth in the cost of benefits from, especially from 2022 to 2025. In 2022, we just reviewed wages. It was wages and wages only, and that was likely necessary from the fact that there was a couple of years that a cost of living adjustment was skipped, right? We only budgeted for a step increase, since we didn't keep the pay plan up to date. And so we had some ground to make up. That's what the wage study said, that's what the select board recommended, and that's
In 2022.
In 2022, and that was approved by voters in March of 2023. So, but that wasn't a total rewards study. I really think that it's, as, as the scales of our total rewards, the balance of those scales has shifted a little bit, where the cost of our benefits, especially for those mid-level full-time positions, the cost of benefits for some of these positions is, in some cases, close to $10,000 more than the wages. And that.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes.
When you're talking about total rewards and benefits, are you specifically talking about the health insurance premiums?
That's what we've seen the biggest inflation in costs.
Okay, have you seen a larger inflation in the retirement funding?
Where the municipal share of the retirement funded, funding has shifted some, but not to that extent.
As wages increased, it shifted, but the percentage that we contribute.
The contribution has shifted. They're on a two-year cycle, the New Hampshire retirement system, and a lot of their changes are driven by changes approved by the legislature. So the retirement system's on a pretty aggressive plan to pay down the unfunded liability, but every time the legislature expands benefits for certain categories of retirees, that adds to the.
And that can't be changed.
No.
Okay, so, so we're back to the cost of the employee portion and the employer portion of the health care.
I think there are more variables than that, but yes.
What are the other variables, Connor?
I think the plans that are offered, the, the companies offering health insurance, you know, to municipalities. I mean, I think there are other metrics. I think there are other levers that can be adjusted to balance total rewards.
Okay. I know you had mentioned you would like to see action sooner than later. How does the rest of the board feel about making a decision tonight? Because this was just on here for discussion.
Yeah.
There's no pressure to make a decision tonight.
I feel pretty strongly that we wait till after the election and see what happens and what the response is to the current budget we're bringing forward, and I think we have a responsibility to.
I agree with that. In addition, and I, and I don't want to get people spooked, like we're not, you know, heading in the, in the proper directions, but just because, you know, we're not making the decision this meeting doesn't necessarily mean that.
I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
What will happen down the road? Because we have collectively agreed to that, no matter what we decide, we will be studying the blue calories.
Yes, we know that.
Because we've agreed to that.
I feel like six weeks is not a long time to wait.
No.
Do we want to, do we want to advertise a request for proposals in the meantime, you know, sometime after February and not make a decision? Or do you want to wait for the whole process until after the election?
I, I would say you're fine to get moving on it and definitely request for three, because we might, we might have.
As long as the RFP indicates that it's pending approval by the select board, I think that way you won't have people responding to you that could have done a tremendous amount of work in response to the RFP and then be like.
Unfortunately, it's pretty common in the municipal circles that projects are advertised.
Okay.
But, and, and we could make that, we could make that clear. I don't think that we would be disadvantaged by waiting for the whole process until after the election, and that may advise, you know, some of the details of, of how we move forward.
So we wait.
So we wait.
Okay.
If, if the rest of you agree that that's the best course.
Is it paid by an incident fund?
Most of us.
Most of us.
The study.
Yeah, I think another possible funding source would be the rebate of the ARPA funds that we'll get from the solar on this project. So that's the, the portion, a portion of that rebate is through the IRS from the Inflation Reduction Act, and it's a silly, silly system where the town, of course, does not file taxes to the IRS, but in this year, we have to file taxes to the IRS so that we can get that rebate.
What, what dollars are we talking about?
30,000-ish.
This for the roof?
Yes.
Way to go, guys.
Credit to the Energy Committee. So, so anyways, that money, because of the timing, that money will be able to be re-appropriated similar to how the ARPA funds would be. It won't be ARPA funds anymore, to the extent that, yeah, to, to the extent that it's a rebate, but I think that's a likely funding source, but it could be the incident fund also.
Connor, every time you're doing a performance review, are you having the employee take their position description and mark up those essential position functions?
Yeah, I'm not requiring a review of job description during every performance review. I think it happens, it happens kind of more regularly through the annual cycle. I mean, you all know when essential position functions have shifted throughout the year to a point where I've recommended re-grading a position have come before the select board. So that kind of happens more organically as due diligence responsibilities shift. So I think everybody is sensitive to, I should say sensitive, but I think everybody's paying attention to the work that they're doing, how that's changing, what's reflected in the job description.
I was thinking of your HR welfare person and the shift that she has experienced where the HR portion of the work has stayed pretty steady and kind of mundane, and then welfare has changed dramatically, which I suspected as we came out of COVID.
No question. We talked about that. I mean, the essential position functions are still the same. I mean, certainly the job day-to-day looks different as the caseload kind of ebbs and flows. And so, yeah, I, I would say we're paying attention to that, but I would say that we're not doing that specifically during performance reviews. I mean, sometimes that spurs a topic of conversation, but as you know, a lot of times the performance component in those conversations in, in the best practices are kind of happening on an ongoing basis. So.
Okay.
So we'll plan this to be an agenda topic in the second meeting in March.
Yes.
Perfect.
In addition, can we gather the last 10 years, how much we paid in studies?
It's just two, 16,000.
Oh, okay.
Yep, we can do that. Moments notice.
Oh, wow, that's quick, good math.
Honestly, it, don't, very, very inexpensive.
I understand.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, last, last on new business is assessing services. So we know Cochran and Consulting Associates have kind of dissolved. There has been a group from Cochran that has moved over to Whitney Consulting Group.
They own the Hampshire firm.
Yep. We're looking to get into a short-term, three-month contract with them to get us through. This is simply a Band-Aid for the moment, and then we would put out an RFP during that and advertise for the assessing services and request for proposals and authorize entering a short-term contract with Whitney.
We need to do that sooner rather than later, so we don't.
Yes.
So even though this is under new business, you would probably like us to address this issue.
Present it as a vote? Yes.
Do it right now.
Okay.
I move that we authorize the advertisement of an RFP for assessing services and to authorize entering a short-term contract with Whitney Consulting Group for essential assessing services until a permanent solution is secured.
Second it.
Rule called.
Patrick, aye.
Carter, aye. Got the LOI.
Gibson, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Great, and so just briefly what this will mean for the community. So the town contracts assessing services, as we all know, and the contracted assessing services will have some of the same personnel, but the, the team will be different, the company will be different. Still, the main point of contact for the community will be the assessing administrative assistant, Kayla Piva, and so the, the resident experience should be very much similar. We're paying for professional expertise in services, but we're still managing the customer service component of that to a large extent. And so certainly if anybody experiences something different or has concerns, they're always welcome to reach out to the town or to my office.
Kayla was, Kayla was the head of the other, and she was, Kayla was the one that was doing most of the.
No, Kayla is our employee.
Kayla works for Jamie.
KD, and, and, yeah, you're there. No, I knew what you meant. KD is a recently certified assessor who was working with Corcoran, doing a lot of field work and data entry, but she recently became certified and is working with the Whitney Consulting Group. She's very familiar with Barrington, our software program and otherwise. And I think one of the reasons, honestly, I was worried for, I'm still worried, but there are not many assessing contractors available to take on, Barrington has over 5,000 parcels. It would be, it would not be smart for Barrington to try to hire assessing staff. And the reason is the, the, it wouldn't make sense for a community the size of Barrington to have an assessing staff member be responsible for not only setting the values and working at that high level, but also doing the field work and data entry and data collection. And so the reason this is a really effective consulting model is because we have hired a team at Corcoran Consulting, and all of the assessing contractors are the same, where they have field folks that kind of, you know, come and go, and they're out in the field and they're doing, you know, their certified work that they are certified by the state to do. Then you have a team of folks doing the data entry in a consistent way, and then you have folks that are more experienced and have more certifications that are doing the higher level assessing functions. And so, you know, there are communities that do assessing in-house, and those communities have a team, an assessing team, right? The smallest department assumes.
So the division of duties is needed in order for this to be effective? Okay.
For another reason, it's, in some ways, a conflict of interest to have your, have your own, or it has an appearance.
Yeah, whether we're paying them as contractors or employees, we're still paying them, but I get it.
The contracted model is, is an, is a, an effective buffer in the resident experience, right? So when, when a resident has a concern with the assessor, it's a lot easier for me to manage that relationship with the resident in a productive way and provide direct feedback without the responsibility for any associated discipline or whatever else with the contractor, and that situation is managed.
That makes sense.
And we're not, I don't think that on its own is a reason to stay with a contracted model. I think more it's the division of duties and the varying level of responsibility necessary to perform, perform the assessing functions. But anyways, yes, so we, so we would have some familiar faces with Whitney Consulting Group, and we are appreciative to them for being willing to consider providing services to Barrington in a temporary fashion.
Excellent.
None of us know what went on with the Corcoran Consulting Associates, but I feel like there's a cautionary tale there of either mismanagement, employees dissatisfied, and we just want to make sure that we keep a tight ship here.
No question, it's an excellent point, and, you know, the assessing is an industry, is an industry plagued similar to police and fire, where you end up with a small pool of people doing the work, and positions go unfilled, and it's, and that shifts a workload onto other employees. And that, that dynamic, that dynamic can be very fragile. And I, I expect that's probably the point that you're making, or maybe suspected, but I think that's very much the cautionary tale of Corcoran Consulting. Not necessarily, I mean, I have no idea whether, you know, it was at any level mismanagement, but I think just the pure fact that there aren't a lot of people doing that work, and it's, and that puts a strain on the people that are doing the work. It's, you know, you become unstable. And so, you know, I think there are a lot of things that we can do, especially in our police and fire departments, and that we have been doing to help manage that, right? So you heard from Chief Walker about the part-time wage increase, which has allowed him to take some of the pressure off his full-time people to make their job roles more sustainable in the police department. You've heard that there were, there were some reductions in the calls that the force participated in due to the vacancies. Now, the chief made clear that they're prioritizing the, the, you know, high-level crimes in Barrington, but also making sure that the, your existing employees have a good work-life balance and you're providing them the flexibility to, you know, live their life and do their job and not have that vacancy be such a burden.
I, I would suspect that the reduction in those motor vehicle stops and things like that, I think if we studied New Hampshire in general and the nation in general, we would find that there has been a reduction and more of a focus on major crimes.
I'm not sure our residents would complain about that.
Yeah, some of them. Maybe the ones speeding.
Well, we talked about speeding on Malago, I made a mistake.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. Okay.
Be my route here, yeah.
Thank you for your support with that, I'll continue to keep you posted.
Select Board member reports and concerns.
Really?
I think we kind of heard from him.
Yeah, we heard most everything. If you noticed, there were notes from the last trustee meeting at the library, which has some importance, the, the solar project they put together, including forty-six thousand from, I mean, and everything, is pretty close to being able to pay for itself. They were gonna talk about rebate, there's $11,000 short, and they were gonna get that maybe from the friends, and then they were talking about a rebate. I don't quite understand that process, that the rebate would come to the town, then how would it get back to the library? I'm, I'm not sure what.
This is that same IRA rebate, and the concern is the money has to be spent first.
Right.
And then it's refunded in the next year.
Right.
And so, they, they likely have enough money to cover, or they're, they're likely $11,000 short to cover the cost of the project after receiving the rebate, but they'll need somebody or something to front that rebate, and, and that somebody or something won't get that money back until the next year. And so, it's, I don't, I don't know what the leading recommendation is right now, but that's a challenge.
Roger was in, Roger was indicating that friends might be able to.
Front the money.
Come up with that, but anyway, and then there was the MOU, and I don't know where that is, and they were gonna talk, they were gonna talk about the MOU.
Anything about that, Tracy can report on?
Yeah. Can we report on?
I just, that was the only thing that I didn't know from the, transfer station, Mr. Fox, as we said, there's a meeting Wednesday, I will attend the ABC, we know, schools deliberative session is the next Saturday, 8th of February.
Tracy?
So, zoning, we had one request for a rehearing. The board determined that there was no reason for rehearing, it has to be for purposes members feel that there's new information that needs to be heard, or your members feel that your procedural outline for the prior hearing was not adhered to correctly, and in this particular case, neither of that heard. So, there was no rehearing. And then there was a request to move from a hundred-foot setback from an existing well for a subdivision to a small section to 85 feet, and that wasn't, so, that went through. In reference to the meeting with the library trustees, Connor and I were present, and two of the trustees were present, and I think we made some really good progress in just understanding how the approach to reviews of the things that ultimately are the decision of the trustee, trustees, but how the review of that information could benefit from going through an established process, much like we have now. Is that a good summation?
I think that's a great summation.
Chris?
Last planning board was a work session, we actually didn't have too much on our agenda, we spent most of the meeting discussing the petition warrant articles, which already, you know, are on, we don't have any ability to edit those or anything. And I think for me, a really exciting thing is we have our first meeting with the UNH Cooperative Extension Downtown and Trails Program on Monday, and so, we start to talk more about that interconnectivity of trails. Interesting.
Energy Committee met Thursday on the January 16th, went over all the same updates and things that we normally do, community power, rates, things like that. Couple of things on the horizon, that they're hoping to maybe participate a little bit more in the master planning process, perhaps in energy chapter, things like that for the, the town. They're also looking down the road to maybe look at updating the solar zoning ordinances, because there, it's been a long time since those have been updated. This past Thursday, we met Conservation Commission, Dr. Steve Crawford, representing New Hampshire Wildlife Federation, came to talk about building some turtle habitat in Barrington, so the Conservation Commission's gonna put together a list of possible sites, both on public and private lands, to participate in this program.
Love it.
Actually got a lot of turtle activity and habitat that could be improved. Vanessa met with us as well, and went over the Biscayne to Coa River Estuaries Partnership Grant Program, the prep program, and offered her services to help the Conservation Commission utilize that for various projects they're considering. We reviewed some of the capital funding requests for things that might fit into that project, so, did some of that, and while, while she was there, we also brought with her the zoning amendments packet, so we could kind of review the zoning amendments, I have an understanding of the voters. Something that was on the radar of the Conservation Commission is Senate Bill 55, in the state that would change land use change tax by specifying that developments with more than 20 houses wouldn't have to pay.
From the state?
From the state, yes. Speaking of what happens at federal and state levels that impact the community, you know, depending if it just gets through, gets through the House and stuff, it would last for five years, and for towns like Barrington, where the Conservation Commission and Conservation efforts are funded by that revenue, would have a really significant impact for the town, so.
Can I ask you a question about that? Does, because you talked about applying for a grant, or possibly, does the Conservation Commissioners have grant writing capabilities?
They, I mean, members of the Conservation Commission have been involved with grant writing, but Vanessa was offering her services.
She was, okay.
Has she done the grant certification courses?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Alrighty, on to Parks and Rec. I think one of the next big community events that we have going on is Zip Code Day, and that's zero, three, zero, eight, two, five.
That's awesome.
So, definitely look forward to that, they get there, basketball going on right now, and playing them for spring. And, that's all I have for Parks and Rec, and I'm gonna move us on to public comment. With nobody in studio, I'm not sure if Alan Cook wants to speak or not for public comment, but I don't see the hand raised, so, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment. And, yeah.
I move we adjourn.
All right, second. Roll call.
Mantrick, aye.
Article five?
Copy, LOI.
Gibson, aye.
Skosh, aye.